Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our public comment session. The mayor is obviously not here. She's absent and excused. She did want me to share that she has a family member in the hospital. We're going to do this the same way as the last time, where we're going to have five or six names on the screen. When you see your name on the screen, please just come down to the podium. In any order is fine. And if you have a presentation or something, we'll make sure we get that queued up for you as well. And then I believe Councilmember Harrison, go ahead.
Yeah. I just want to say thank you all for being here tonight. I recognize that many of you are here planning to speak about the continued atrocities taking place in Gaza. Since October, I have heard our community in Raleigh cycle through despair, anger, and grief. And what I hope we land on and work on to sustain is taking care of one another. So what does that look like? For me, that's listening. That's listening to you. I spent time, for example, with our Jewish leaders after October 7th at their memorial at Moore Square. I saw the heartache in their eyes, wondering if their community would be able to return home. It also means contributing to the work of healers and peacemakers. We need to donate money and contribute to those aid groups that are taking care of Palestinians in harm's way right now. And finally, it is about elevating our voices. Tomorrow, I will join Muslim Women for and Jewish Voice for Peace to deliver a ceasefire petition to Congresswoman Ross. It has... (APPLAUSE). It has been signed by over 30 elected officials from across the state. So many lives have been lost, but I still imagine another world is possible. Thank you for doing the same.
Councilmember Patton.
Yeah. And I also just wanted to chime in. I appreciate you all being here. I appreciate your continued pressure that you're putting on holding elected officials accountable, myself included. I know that after the statement that was given last week, there was some disappointment in that, and particularly directed at me, which is welcome. You are allowed to be disappointed with me, and I appreciate you holding me accountable. I wanted to acknowledge that I did sign on to the letter that's been circulated by our state representatives. I continue to stand in my position and believe that a ceasefire is the appropriate resolution to this conflict. And also think a lot about the phrase "clear as kind." And I'm trying to hold two truths at once, and that for months, you've been coming here asking us to take a stand. And when it became clear that there was not consensus on our council, I thought an answer was better than our continued radio silence. So that is why we issued the statement.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start the public comments now. So if your name is on the screen, please just come forward in whatever order. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Octavia Rainey, and I'm here to say that I do not support armed security at Moore Square Bus Station. Here is a list from 2011, 2012, 2013 of all the arrests that was made at Moore Square by the Robo cops. I think it's a shame that y'all are not listening to me, but these were black people you're talking about that was mistreated. Here, so I'm asking the police chief of Raleigh, when she issued the call saying that there were 500 charges, I'm asking her for this spreadsheet now. You got to show me the 500 charges. So that mean listing them by name, listing them by race, listing them by charges. Who was the arresting officers? And what was the court date? I went with a lot of these guys to court, and I passed this out to you before, but you are not listening to me. You are not listening to me. You got to get on your job and do better. I want this information.
I'm a Raleigh resident here to demand that this council retract its statement of neutrality and instead support the ceasefire resolution. We all remember being in elementary school, attending those all-school assemblies. You know, the ones that would give us lectures on bullying and stranger danger. And granted that they're no one's favorite memory, but nevertheless, let's take a trip down memory lane. They tell you that bullying is bad and that you should always stand up for someone getting bullied. They say you can't just be a bystander, you have to be an upstander. So when you see a bully push someone down in a hallway, it's not enough that you weren't the one who pushed them, you have to be the one who helps them back up, because being a bystander is one of the worst things you can be. Then eventually, you join the world of adults, and they tell you that neutrality is professionalism because it means you respect all sides. But when a bully pushes someone down the hallway, you don't stop to ask them their side. When a school shooter is shooting, you don't stop to ask them how they're doing today. And when a war criminal is aiming bombs at kindergartens, you certainly do not stop to hold their hand. So I'm asking you, are you going to stand by? Are you going to stand up ceasefire now? Amira Clark. Today's victims could have been saved by yesterday's ceasefire. The ones lost tomorrow could have been saved. This country has inspired and contributed to other genocides. You have the power to prevent the victims of Rafa, and you have the power to prevent the future ones. The news says Palestinian minors found dead. These were children and babies that were murdered and lynched by Israel. They are being starved and refuse to intervene. So being neutral and not calling a ceasefire means you allow this to continue. Do not pretend to care about both sides. There are not two states, there are not two armies. Israel bombed the city of Rafa, and their army designated this as a safe zone. Give me a reason to support a country that murders and lynch thousands of Palestinian children and civilians. The US has been complicit in this occupation for over 75 years, and enough is enough. Palestine will be free, inshallah.
I stand before you first and foremost a mother, but I speak to you as a human being. Over 30,000 dead in Gaza, 13,000 of dead children. For one moment, I want you to think of the grieving mothers and fathers of those 13,000 dead children forever gone. For one moment, I want you to think of the grieving orphaned children forever alone. The International Court of Justice has ruled that there's enough evidence of genocide that they will proceed with the case against Israel. And Israel continues uploading more and more evidence every day chronicling their carnage. Today is Valentine Day Eve. Show empathy. Be a voice for those parents and those 13,000 dead children, innocent children. Your silence is a voice for slaughter. Be leaders, call for a ceasefire, put us on the path towards peace. Ceasefire now, free Palestine.
I'm Palestinian, born in Raleigh District C. I want to invite us all to take a moment and reflect on our shared humanity. If you're comfortable, close your eyes and imagine that the roles were reversed. A group comes in and builds 30-foot-tall walls circling a city in Israel. They cut off access to clean water, food, and medicine, then drop the equivalent to three nuclear bombs on an area smaller than Raleigh. Over tens of thousands of Israeli civilians are killed, over 10,000 children are killed, and thousands more are injured or orphaned. Imagine the rampant propaganda, calling them animals and pests that need to be eradicated. Would you still want to appear neutral by not calling for a ceasefire?
Good evening, Council. When I spoke last in January, I was a little hasty, a little nervous, for lack of a better term. Coming up now, it seems like I'm just speaking to a couple of normal people, exhausted people in the crowd. Real quick, why did they have to bomb Rafa in the middle of the Super Bowl? Why is there genocidal atrocities orchestrated around the American consumer to distract them, to orchestrate polished propaganda? It's disgusting, it's dystopian, I reject it with my full body, so does everyone else. Call for a ceasefire, don't call for a ceasefire. Like I said before, the global community will move past the need for an apartheid in the Middle East. It's very simple. No one was buying this anymore. The Zionists have stopped showing up. Why? They thought they've won, simply. But we continue to show up because we believe in your power to stand up and represent the community. Ceasefire now.
All right, Mohammed Amra, here we go. During the Super Bowl, I'm sure you all seen the famous commercial with Israel saying, hey, we appeal, making a public appeal for our dads, let's bring them home. Okay, so let's talk about those Palestinian dads that are in Gaza. 13,000 people, children missing and dead. Think about that. Some of these fathers struggling to locate their children in rubble, no clue where they are, so they can take them home and bury them. And not to mention Israel tearing up the cemeteries. But anyways, so while all the communities, day in and day out, are struggling just to survive, water, food, et cetera. And then what do they do? They're going to bed at night, they're hoping they wake up the next day so they can be the ones who treat the casualties. So, you know, let's release the hostages. More than two... Ceasefire, free Palestine.
Number eight, Victor Kisa. I will keep my message short and to the point. I don't know what else to say to the city council anymore. Disappointed doesn't even begin to cover how we feel. We feel betrayed and repulsed by the actions of the city council and refusing to pass a ceasefire resolution. You have given us meaningless statements and thought you could get away with it, but you are wrong. You can never silence the voices of the oppressed, whether in the streets of Raleigh or in the city council meetings. We will not stop talking about Palestine, and we will not stop fighting against injustice. The hearts you see represent the 110,000 Palestinians' lives killed, injured, or missing under the rubble, and the 565,000 Palestinians expected to die within the year from starvation and infectious disease. I'm going to say it one more time because you're not hearing us. Half a million people are going to die because of disease and starvation, because of the Israeli bombs on hospitals. Have a heart, city council, it's Valentine's Day tomorrow, but there's nothing to celebrate. History will see us complicit in genocide. Free, free Palestine.
Hi, I'm Maryam. Today, I will share the story of Imad, a 13-year-old boy coping with autism who is currently without a family, joining numerous children who share this heartbreaking reality. Imad is also currently facing medical conditions commonly experienced by children with autism. And with no functioning hospitals in Gaza due to their destruction, he and many others are unable to receive proper care. Now envision stepping into Imad's world, where the loss of your entire family is compounded by your inability to comprehend the concept of death fully. Picture yourself unaware of your family's whereabouts, without the means to communicate with others while being trapped under rubble and the never-ending bombardment all around you. Imagine being unable to scream for help because you are voiceless. Try to fathom being in a situation where communication and comprehension seem impossible due to a moment of confusion and pain. This is the reality of a child with autism in Gaza. This is the reality of Imad. Now tell me, do these children deserve to suffer? Do these children deserve to die? Have the autistic children of Palestine harmed anyone? I want you to remember them when you do not call for a ceasefire.
Shame on Mayor Baldwin. The highest courts in the land have called and confirmed...
One sec, can you pause that? We just can't hear them when y'all do that, so the snapping was actually fine because it's like a show of support, but we can still hear the speaker. I just don't want to take away from their time. We could just restart it for her, please.
Thanks so much. The highest courts have confirmed that there was any question that Israel and the United States are engaged in genocide and ethnic cleansing by the very definition. The facts leave no room for the lie that this is complicated. The last safe place in Gaza where children, amputees, and orphans were sent to live in tents, and it's being bombed nonstop as we speak right now in this moment. We don't just give Israel arms, we provide the political cover, and that's where you come in. That's what this is about. This is democracy. This blood is on your hands. We need you. We are coming to you as constituents with faith in humanity. I want to thank Christina and Mary from the bottom of my heart. You remind us that some elected officials have heart and can stand on the truth of justice, humanity, and truth. The facts are undeniable. Mayor Baldwin and those who choose to align yourselves with the politics of greed and corruption while pretending to give a damn about the people, thank you as well, because you have lit a fire that will not go out. And we're going to remember in November, and we're going to support our allies and vote the rest of y'all out.
Okay, thank you.
That's a tough act to follow. All right. Adam Zegar. I'm going to refute some of the bogus propaganda that's been repeated by the supporters of this genocidal regime. Claim number one, there was a ceasefire on and before October 6th. This is false. To make this claim implies that there are two sovereign nations that were in an agreement. The reality, however, is that Israel controlled not only the borders, but the movement of people in and out of Gaza, as well as the utilities within Gaza that 2.3 million people relied on. Even during times of calm, residents only had electricity for four hours a day. So for those foolishly saying if only Hamas would lay down their weapons, there would be no more bloodshed, are the same people okay with the status quo and returning to the same conditions as the last 17 years of blockade and limitation of resources? The fact that Israel can on whim turn off electricity, water, fuel, and food to a population demonstrates that they are in fact occupying them, and this is what spurred October 7th in the first place. We call on a ceasefire resolution right away. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Nadeem Jabrile. What is our responsibility towards our fellow man? What do we owe each other? I believe we owe it to the Palestinians and the Israelis to remind them of humanity. The Palestinians are not viewed as human by this council. The Israelis are not viewed as human either. We allowed them to become monsters, the very monsters they dreaded all these years. Sometimes things go beyond our control. Israel has gone beyond the United States' control for a long time, and I do not have faith in our diplomatic process anymore. This responsibility lies with you, city council, you who had a chance to put an end to the cycle of violence and chose not to, have allowed the Israelis to become that which haunts them. You have allowed the Palestinians to shed blood for nothing. You have children, young child. Every day, I watch genocide on my phone, and my wife begs me to stop. It says, just hang out with our three-year-old. And I do. I love spending time with my three-year-old.
My name's Rayyan Ali. John, Corey, and Stormy, I'm talking to you as the three minority members left on this board who have yet to encourage or support the passage of a ceasefire resolution. I find it appalling that you all have sat silent as hundreds of your constituents have pleaded for justice. As we speak, the last safe zone at the southernmost part of Gaza, Rafah, housing 1.4 million displaced Palestinians fleeing from other designated safe zones, is being deliberately targeted in the efforts of the true goal of Netanyahu's Nazi regime to ethnically cleanse the Palestinian people. During the hours in which the Super Bowl began, bombs rained down on Rafah, where many of us, including myself, have family taking shelter in tents under the most horrific conditions. How many more children have to be blown to pieces? How many more? And when your kids ask you what you did, when they read about us in textbooks, what will you tell them?
Please, you can finish your thought, but we have to...
Your silence won't be forgotten, nor will it be forgiven. Speak up or prepare to be voted out.
All right, thank you.
My name's Umar Nabulsi, and I have a video.
Okay, one sec.
These are the tears of a boy named Muhammad. His cries, his wails of despair echo the anguish of thousands of children whose innocence has been cruelly snatched away by the relentless onslaught of violence. Each tear that falls from his eyes represent a thousand more shed by children robbed of their childhood, their dreams, and their very humanity. If you have an ounce of humanity, his cries should pierce every soul in this room. You have failed every child whose laughter has been silenced by the roar of bombs, whose dreams have been crushed by the weight of this genocide. You have chosen the path of indifference, of complacency, and of moral bankruptcy. You have betrayed the trust placed in you by your constituents. We will not be complicit in your negligence. We will not rest until justice is served, until every child like Muhammad can dream of a future free from fear and violence. The time for excuses is over. We demand accountability and justice, and we will not stop fighting until every child...
Palestine and ceasefire now.
Hang on one sec. I really want folks to be able to finish their sentence. I really hate when the clock hits and you're like in the middle of a thought, but I can't let folks just continuously roll over the time, so please finish your sentence. I really don't want to have to cut anybody off, but let's just be respectful of everybody else, okay? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ratil. I'm like other groups, I'm not paid to speak the truth. Recently, the United States and a dozen other countries have cut funding for the United Nations Relief and Work Agency for Palestinian refugees. What more clear signal do you need to see to finally open your eyes and realize that Palestinians are living by one piece of bread? They cannot even chew on their bread without fear, and some have to drink their urine to survive. Apparently, sheep also turned out to be Hamas supporters, so they were being killed. After Israel suspended all humanitarian aid to Gaza, including essential provisions, and blocked all humanitarian strike from entering the region, over 2 million people in Gaza are now crumbling with the trade of famine. Tragically, babies are succumbing to their situation, with some losing their lives due to shortage of milk, while the US continues to fund Israel after the murder of over 30,000 Palestinians. You will never defeat a nation where its children stand in front of Israeli tanks with stones. Ceasefire now, free Palestine.
Is Speaker number 15 on this list here? Okay, if you could put the next set up, please, thank you.
Panadia Lee. Israel says they will not stop the war permanently, even if there's a ceasefire. Why? What would be the reason not to stop the war with Palestinians? The reason is because the plan all along was to allow anything to happen that would allow them to occupy more land and make more Palestinian refugees. Not only are we refugees now, but we're adding the number of innocent Palestinian children, women, journalists, men killed at the hands of Israel. We are adding the number of innocent injured, amputated, no anesthesia, giving birth, newborn baby not likely to survive. We are adding the innocent displaced, starving Palestinian. And I can't face my deathbed staying silent, because if stars were aligned differently, I would be one of them. And frankly, I'm done with the agree to disagree. I'm disgusted by anyone who's not trying to stop this antisemitism. Ceasefire now and forever, and free Palestine.
I work here in Raleigh. I've been supporting Palestine's liberation since 2019. For those of you playing the home game, that's before October 7th. Recently, this council made a statement that for all its words could have simply said, we don't see Palestinians as human. You may see your decision not to vote as a neutral stance, but the truth is Zionists, that is, the minority of people who have spoken here in the past few months, are celebrating this as a win. Meanwhile, the majority, those of us who oppose genocide, have condemned your statement, or at least those of us who have had time to condemn your statement between grieving our dead. Those of you on this council who have not stood with your Palestinian constituents as American taxes foot the bill for their loved ones' genocides will be remembered by this city as cowards, and you will feel this on Election Day. This city will make sure of it. History may try to absolve you, give you the benefit of the doubt, but we will not allow it. Palestine will be free of Israel and of your apathy.
I watched your statement about why you won't pass a ceasefire and forgive my bluntness, but I call BS. There is no such thing as neutrality in a genocide, which people tonight have provided you so much evidence, it's absurd that we are here again tonight. You are either in, or you are in the way. Jonathan, Corey, Stormy, you are in the way. Is your soul really worth your seat? I had something else prepared, but then I saw a picture of a young girl, maybe five, hanging from her shirt from a pipe, killed by a bomb mostly paid for with my hard-earned tax dollars, our hard-earned tax dollars, ripped in half with her organs hanging below her. But then I saw Biden tweet a picture of himself grinning, arms crossed with laser eyes, captioned, "Just like we drew up," as the Super Bowl distracted us from Congress passing $14 billion in aid in Israel carpet bombing Rafa. So I guess the only thing I have left to say, as I feel like I stand in District 1 Panem from The Hunger Games, is ceasefire now, free, free Palestine.
This is the fourth month where time for public comments have been shortened due to the overwhelming number of participants. My statement tonight is not going to be popular, but I'm willing to risk it so we can resume addressing concerns affecting Raleigh. Regarding the Middle East conflict, it's important to acknowledge the limitations of our city council. Despite the genuine concerns voiced here, the reality is the complexities of this conflict render it beyond their scope. At best, any action taken would be symbolic, and at worst divisive. Nevertheless, your voices matter, and I encourage you to channel that energy towards those who hold greater influence in shaping our foreign policy. It's your senators, it's your House representative, it's President Biden. Directly engaging with those who have the power to enact change is our best hope to address these atrocities and the humanitarian crisis in Gaza. Rest assured, your concerns have not fallen on deaf ears. Let's work together to amplify our voices where they can truly make a difference.
I think we've reached the end. Thank you. Number 20 hasn't spoken yet, I don't think.
Yeah, that was Lisa.
Okay, that's right, go ahead. Start with 21, then, thank you. And we just put more names on the screen, so if you see your name up there, please go ahead and head down to the podium, and in any order is fine. Thank you.
Hello, Sherry Kilgus-Cramer. We will not be silenced. I'm here in favor of a permanent ceasefire resolution. Consider the state of Palestinian women, the physical trauma, the blast trauma, miscarriages up by 300%, births happening in dirty tents, no sanitary pad material available for women, babies dying during childbirth, mothers dying during childbirth, prenatal and postnatal care nonexistent, babies starving. It's unconscionable. We need to support a Palestine free of genocide. How can anyone on this council be okay with the killing of innocent people, and so many? Are you so protective of your position that keeping it's more important than tens of thousands of human lives? Do any of you have children, parents? What if they were all gone tomorrow, first raped, then shot, or bombed? How would that feel? Your soul must be buried if... Your soul must be buried if doing the right thing eludes you in a public position. Don't place your position, politics, and greed above humanity. Support your fellow humans. Pass a permanent ceasefire resolution and do the right thing, for the love of God.
I'm Ezra Alsayan. I have a PowerPoint.
I just, one second before you do that. I'm being told by our attorney's office that I have to legally disclaim, since this is being livestreamed, that this video is graphic. Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to pass you. Too many lives lost, too many children killed. What is so complicated about the killing of almost 14,000 children? It's not going through. Is it really that complicated? Are you a heartless human being? How many more Palestinian children need to die for you to speak up? Poor Palestinians have been advocating for the freedom to live, while others have been advocating for the freedom to kill. I don't think my videos are gonna play. No. We are showing you images of children blown to pieces and babies drenched in blood by the Israeli occupation force, and you continue to make excuses for Israel rather than demand an immediate ceasefire. You clearly do not value the lives of Palestinians. I wonder what you would do if this was your family. Now look them in the eye and tell them you did everything to protect them. Ceasefire now.
My name is Angie. I would like to read a letter of outrage in response to Mayor Baldwin's statement last Tuesday, February 6th. Forty-two organizations across Raleigh and the Triangle have signed this letter. I quote from the statement. "We are outraged by the statement shared by Mayor Mary Ann Baldwin during Raleigh City Council's closed session on Tuesday, February 6th, claiming that the council will not take up a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza." With this statement, Mayor Baldwin and her supporters in city council reveal that they do not care about the thousands of Palestinian and non-Palestinian constituents who have shared their grief and pain over the past several months, and who have clearly demanded that their city council stand in opposition to the ongoing indiscriminate slaughter of Palestinians.
Sue Woodling. And I'm going to continue reading from the statement. Mayor Baldwin and the Raleigh City Council have had over 100 days into the ongoing genocide in Palestine to recognize their local influence and responsibility by joining over 50 city councils across the country and passing a ceasefire resolution. Instead, the mayor chose to share a statement of alleged neutrality, which in situations of injustice and human suffering only leads support to the oppressor. If they care about lasting peace and justice, they must make their positions clear and introduce a vote on a ceasefire resolution. Ceasefire now.
Before you start speaking, I've got more folks lined up than are left on this set. Is speaker number 21 there in line? No, okay, can we roll up to starting at 26? Are y'all who are waiting to speak on this set of speakers?
I'm Jim Rice.
All right, go ahead, thank you.
My name is Jim Rice, and I continue reading from the statement. Hundreds of Raleigh constituents from various faith, racial, and ethnic backgrounds have packed Raleigh City Council for four consecutive public comment meetings, demanding a ceasefire resolution. Over the past five months, hundreds of calls have been made, and more than 4,000 emails were sent to Raleigh City Council members, asking them to introduce and pass a ceasefire resolution. Thus, the mayor and her supporters not only chose to insult thousands of their constituents and to insult the clear calls for a just peace, but they also chose to insult the very spirit of democracy in our capital city. Furthermore, by claiming to speak on behalf of the entire city council while not even calling the statement up to a vote, the mayor also insulted the democratic process itself.
My name is Shadi. I'm gonna continue reading from the statement.
Which number are you on the-
Thirty-two.
Okay, that's fine, go ahead.
Council members Mayor Black, Christina Jones, Megan Patton, and Jane Harrison have signed a public letter along with over 30 elected leaders from across the state urging the Biden administration and the North Carolina delegation in Congress to support a permanent ceasefire. We are disappointed in Council members Patton and Council member Harrison for supporting Mayor Baldwin's statement instead of standing firm on their public commitment to a ceasefire. And we are appalled by Council members Corey Branch and Jonathan Melton and Stormy Ford for their silence as Mayor Baldwin turned against the request of the people to introduce a ceasefire resolution. Ceasefire now.
My name is Zamar, and I continue reading the statement. We have witnessed the power of community coming together, young people-
Hang on one second, I'm so sorry, we didn't start your clock. Go ahead, start over, go ahead.
We have witnessed the power of community coming together, young people, elders, Palestinians and non-Palestinians, Jews, Christians, and Muslims, holding each other and standing on the side of justice, from the affordable houses, from the affordable houses to community safety, to the end of occupation in Palestine. All of our struggles and our liberation are connected. We will not stop organizing for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. We will not stop organizing for peace and justice. This was signed as of 13th of February 2024 by Seven Directions of Service, Black Workers of Justice, Carolina Abortion Fund, Carolina Migrant Network, Kari Environmental Justice League, Coalition Against Tourism, Community- Do I still have time?
You don't, but you can finish your thought. How much- That's fine. If he's gonna keep reading the letter, then that's fine. Just bring it, oh, that's fine, too. Thank you.
My name is Alex Trejo, and I will be continuing reading the list of organizations. First off, we will not stop organizing for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. We will not stop organizing for peace and justice. El Pueblo, Fruit of Labor Cultural Center, Entrogressive Medical Pediatrics, La Fuerza, Jazz Bills and 919, Jewish Voices for Peace, Korea Peace Now, North Carolina, Medina Quran and Youth Center, Meals for the Masses, Meredith Students for Justice in Palestine, Migrants Room Media, Mothers for Ceasefire, Mountain Area Abortion Dula Collective, Muslims Women's For, Muslims for Social Justice, NC Environmental Justice Network, NC Green Party, NC Public Service Workers Union UE Local 150, North Carolina Asian Americans Together, Party for Socialism Liberation, Pax Christie Triangle NC, People's Power Lab, Potter NC Action, Pro Choice North Carolina, Refund Raleigh, Road Chapter Latinas Promoviendo Comunidad, Socialist Alternative, NC Triangle, Socialist Party Northern Piedmont Local, Southern Vision Alliance, Triangle Democratic Socialists of America, Triangle Mask Block, United for a Fair Economy, Veterans for Peace Eisenhower Chapter 157, Voices for Justice in Palestine, Young Americans Protest, Ceasefire Now, Resolution Now.
Y'all, I can't, we can't keep the meeting going if you guys chant. Y'all, we have a- We're gonna recess.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lou Bonapena, City Clerk for the City of Raleigh. The Presiding Officer of tonight's city council meeting has adjourned tonight's city council meeting. Thank you.